Good morning. It is nine AM on July tenth. I'm gonna call this meeting of the City of Findlay City Planning Commission to order. Uh, roll call please.
Mayor Moon.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Trombley.
Here.
And Mr. Klinger.
Here.
Very good. At this time, anyone that plans to speak for or against an item, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in.
Um, do you affirm that all the testimony and evidence you're about to give in a case before this commission this day will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? And will conform to the facts of the case and the rules of this commission. This you affirm under the pains and penalties of perjury. Please say I do.
Very good. You may be seated. We have the June twelfth, twenty twenty-five minutes. Um, any edits from what was circulated? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
A second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Alright, minutes are approved. We do have one old item, so we will begin with old item application for site plan review SP dash zero four dash twenty twenty-five. Filed by R and R Tacker LLC to review a proposed six pump station to be located eleven hundred West Main Cross Street. CPC staff comments.
So to remind ourselves, this request is on the north side of West Main Cross Street near the intersection with Glessner Avenue. Uh, parcel zone C two general commercial uh, to the west and the south. It's own C two general commercial. Uh, to the east, uh, is owned R three small lot residential. Uh, it's not located with a hundred, within the hundred year floodplain, and the City of Findlay land use plan designates the property as neighborhood commercial. Uh, parcel history, the site uh, is currently the abandoned uh, car wash there. Um, staff analysis, uh, the site is relatively small for a C two parcel measuring at point six uh, zero three acres in size. Um, the applicant would remove the old structure from the car wash and construct a six pump gas station and small convenience store. Uh, convenience store would measure two thousand five hundred thirty-five square feet in size. Uh, they've updated that parking um. Uh, layout to meet the C two standards, which is uh, seven parking spaces with one being designated as handicapped. Um, this parcel is right on the edge of uh, the eastern edge of a commercial area that services uh, traffic from I seventy-five. Uh, directly east, uh, starts that neighborhood of R three small lot residential. Uh, in similar situations in Findlay, we've seen gas stations abutting residential install masonry walls to help reduce the impact to the surrounding residential areas. Uh, and we recommended installing a masonry wall measuring six feet in height along the eastern uh, side of the site, which abuts that residential house. Uh, they've added that to the plans noting that it would be made with the same brick and stone to match the materials used on their uh, convenience store building. Uh, the wall would uh, be roughly a hundred feet long and stop at the front building line of the neighbor to the east. Uh, landscaping plan has been updated since last month. Uh, the code had um, required one shrub per five lineal feet around the perimeter of the site. Uh, that would require thirty-five along the west, thirty-two along the north, and thirty-five along the east. Um, they've included uh, foundation plantings along the buildings and they were required to put in thirty-two. So, um, one of the main concerns for the proposal though, um, is kind of this um, ability to have trucks maneuver in and out of the site. Um, we were presented with the turn radius drawing. Um, originally, um, we have an updated drawing um, that you're seeing right now that Matt's just pulled up. Um, uh, at the time I wrote the staff uh, report, um, uh, it's, it was kind of more evident that the trucks were, would uh, be unable to turn onto the site and maneuver uh, fuel tanks. Uh, drawings show that they would have to maneuver into the opposite lane of traffic to complete that turn properly. And while we appreciated uh, their attempt to um, meet our concerns from last month, after discussion with the city engineer uh, staff. Um, we had changed our recommend, recommendation to denial of the site plan.
Thank you. Engineering is not here, so I just wanna recap a couple of items that he shared. Um, all of the standard items related to access, water service, their sanitary service, stormwater, and MS four ma- management requirements. He did also share some concerns on the revised drawings. The drawings do not show how the drive will restrict left turning motions out of the site. This was a recommendation from the prior meeting. And from the truck turning movement drawing, it seems the site is restricting a lot of movements from the delivery trucks, and they would need to swing into opposing traffic to enter the site. If an island is placed within the drive apron to restrict left turning motions, how would they affect the trucks turning motions? From the drawing, it appears that the trucks can only enter from the east, so if trucks come from the west, would they be able to make those turns uh, turn radius? Fire prevention.
Really no different comments from last month, uh, just permits, and we're still concerned about how tight the site is.
Very good. So the recommendation from CPC staff, staff recommends denial of the application for site plan review SP dash zero four dash twenty twenty-five. Filed by R and R Tacker LLC to review a proposed six pump gas station to be located eleven hundred West Main Cross Street. Is the applicant here to speak on this item? If you just come on up and please reintroduce yourself. I know you were here last time. Can you make sure that the microphone's on and get it kinda close to ya? Thank you.
Sorry. Uh, my name is Richard Drake with Drake Architecture, and I am representing R and R Tacker. So, um, we did speak with uh, zoning on Tuesday, and they did tell us that they were going to deny this due to the turning radiuses. And so we did have a little bit of time to present something a little extra, which is what I had already passed out to you all today, and that's what's currently on the um, on the screen right now. So, the, what we're proposing is they do have a smaller truck. It's only twenty-eight feet long. It's not that large sixty footer. That was what they had reviewed here in zoning. So this is, and the other thing that we also, the civil engineer for some reason put east entry. We really, we really will be coming from the west, which is from the highway. We're not gonna be coming from the eastern side, so we'll be a left turn in for this vehicle, and it will be a right turn out. What we're proposing on this is to actually stripe that island, so it doesn't restrict access, but there also is signage that is gonna be presented that says left turn only on that right side as you exit. So it will say left turn only, and the arrow will show left turn only there. It's a number sixteen on the general notes underneath site and zoning notes. Side number sixteen, that talks about that left turn only. I know it's really small, it's hard to read. I'm not sure if they can zoom in or not, but, but that, but that's the language that does state that. So this vehicle is only about ten feet longer than, you know, a standard large SUV, so it can easily go around this site. The, it can fit underneath the canopy, so the only restrictions actually is the pump themselves. It can hit underneath the edge of that canopy, which we're showing there in this drawing. And also to note, you know, traffic is only about eleven thousand vehicles per day, which only equates to around seven and a half cars per minute. It's that, it's not heavy traffic, and considered like if it was a downtown situation where there's a lot of stacking or backup. There's not a light really close to this, so the, and there is actually a center turn lane here as well. So that does help with the flow of traffic here.
Did you do truck turns to show how it's going to go around the canopy? I'm assuming those are the tanks on the right-hand side, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. Of, it can maneuver without getting in the way of any potential cars that were parked at the dispensers or in front of the store?
Well, the idea, um, honestly, the civil engineer did not show that.
Okay.
Um, the vehicle should, this truck should easily be able to maneuver around in that space that's there. I mean, there's approximately forty feet between the backside of those parking spaces and the edge of the pumps. And the idea is that we are planning on delivering fuel off hours, so earlier in the morning and later in the evening, where there won't be as much traffic around the site or even on the street.
But you're still talking about once, twice a day having to drop fuel off. It's only three thousand gallons.
I, I, I would assume so, yeah.
Do you have any sort of an average as to how many gallons per day of a six uh, pump uh, facility would?
I, 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 I do not. That'd be something that the owner would be able to provide, but I cannot, no.
Because you got thirty thousand, thirty thousand gallons in storage, but you're trying to supply that by a three thousand gallon truck, and that sounds like that could be multiple deliveries per day. Um, couple other questions, I guess. Uh, is there a drive-through with this facility?
There currently is not a drive-through. Um, they decided to remove that from the plan. Um, that's something that they may consider down the road, but that would be a whole separate thing, and currently we are not going for a drive-through.
Okay, um, how are you handling the, the site drainage? Are you, are you resurfacing this entire lot?
Um, they are going to be resurfacing the lot, and as far as I know, the drainage itself is not an issue because we don't have to address it, because we're not increasing the, the hardscape of the lot itself.
No, but you got, the storm drainage, you gotta get off the site.
Yes, and, and honestly, that's something the civil engineer will take care of, so I mean, I, I honestly don't know how drainage is being taken care of currently. But I don't think that we're gonna be required to change it from what its current status is concerning. We're not changing the hard pavement, so we're not required to deal with detention or retention.
You're right. I understand that.
Okay.
But I, what I'm concerned with, are you gonna have cat spasens? Are you going to be changing the, the topol of the existing hard surfaces, uh, and how is that being handled? There's no information on the drawings for us on that.
We shouldn't be changing the topol. It's a very flat site. I mean, so, but to answer your question, I don't know which way the water's gonna flow. I'm not a civil engineer, and I don't know how it's being addressed at this point.
Matt, can you bring up Google Earth real quick or the auditor site to see, cause I've, I've, Jeremy, I know, had mentioned at the last meeting not being an issue, cause I think it goes to this. The northwest corner, and I believe there's a regional detention pond uh, along the highway. Cause it's, yeah, I think it all kind of flows towards uh, the cemetery. I know, I can't, I can't look at it from this.
So.
Can you zoom in and put that maybe in the bottom right corner of the screen? Okay, so we're looking here. For some reason, I was thinking it was, there was technically that low green spot that you see there. Do you recall, Matt?
No, I do not.
Who lets Jeremy go on vacation? Um, but I, I do know, obviously they'll have to comply with all of the, the standards and work that through that. That's one of the notes with Jeremy. I, you know, I could go either way on this, cause I, I want to see this site redeveloped. I think this is an appropriate use for that site, though I'm not a big fan of gas stations all over the place. But, um. When you were talking earlier though, you mentioned that you were gonna have signage for left out, left only.
Correct.
I, to.
I mean, right.
Just, you mean right only, though, right?
I'm sorry, yes. It's a right turn only. I'm thinking, I'm looking at it, but yes.
It would be yours, yes.
Yes, it'd be on your right for a right turn exit only. Sorry.
Okay, no, that's, that's fine. That's what I figured, kinda right in, right out.
It's not right in, right out, though. It's full access in.
No, it's, it's a left in, it's left in, right in, right out only.
Right out only.
Yeah.
Okay.
And really with a striped median, that people are gonna do whatever they want anyways. We see that with the raised at Speedway on Tippin.
Right. The traffic impact study did recommend a right out only. That was the result of it. But you're not gonna have any physical barrier preventing people from taking a left.
I mean, we can switch this to a physical barrier, absolutely. I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. I'm just trying to, to give. I know the issues where everybody was worried about the trucks having enough room to get in. If we stripe it to get in, then it allows them to go over that when they are entering. But I think that we can easily get a concrete curb in there, but I mean, I'm gonna tell you, I've done it a hundred times. I've made a, a left out of a right turn with a curb. I mean, I've done it. I mean, half the people in this room, I'm sure, have done it. That's not gonna stop anybody from doing it. Most people abide by the signage. Most people abide by the striping. Most people just abide by the rules. So, I mean, that's, I mean, that's a given. Anybody's gonna find a way around any issue, anything we put there. But if putting a concrete curb there gets us, gets us an okay, absolutely we'll do it. And then we may have to widen the entry just a little bit more than what it is in order to accommodate the trucks turning in.
Was there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? And if you're sitting over here, you have to stand up and raise your hand because you hide from me over there, so I don't wanna miss somebody. Okay.
I, I've got another question, and that is, uh, on this last drawing you presented, you have a six foot high fence, or it's called a six foot high fence. It's actually a three and a half foot high fence. You've got six foot high pillars, but that's, to me, is not a six foot high fence.
Which is what your zoning code does show, is that fence type is from a reason why I did it, cause it's part of the, the zoning code.
I, I, I question whether three and a half feet is quite enough to get the headlights and stuff out of the residential area.
And, and that's fine. We can make it a six foot. I was only doing what the zoning code showed.
Um, I provided him a, a drawing example from the C three district.
Yes.
Um, so I think you guys could require it to go above that, that three and a half foot. Um, I, I'm thinking of the Speedway um, on South Main. Um, that one is six feet tall.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely. If you wanna put a condition to this for that, a hundred percent. Same thing with the concrete island.
So the wall would have to be, portions of it can be six feet. As it gets to the front yard, it has to go down, so that's, it would be a hybrid of, I think, both.
Um, actually, actually, um, I talked with Eric about that and Jeremy, and they said, um, that length up to the front of the neighboring house, um, that could be six feet tall the whole way. Um, and then when it stops at the front of that house, it won't impede um, vision for turning and anything like that because of the way that the, the street is angled. Um, so at that point, the wall will stop and won't need to like dip down at all. Sorry.
No, thanks.
Do you anticipate them coming back at some point with a drive-through window uh, application?
I mean, there's, there's potential for it, but that's also your opportunity to deny it.
Can someone close the door now that we're, we're started just to help manage noise?
Which is, uh, which was the reason why we took it out, was because we didn't want it to be a, a hindrance to the project today. So that's why they, they would like to get the project in. If drive-through is not something that the board's amenable to, then I'd prefer that that get removed and not the whole project get killed because of it.
Um, and I would mention on, on the island, I think doing the striping for now is fine. I would agree. I think semi-trucks make left turns into establishments frequently. I think giving them more radius. Uh, makes more sense, and like you mentioned, unfortunately, folks don't always obey our, our recommendations, and I think that that causes more conflict points if we tried to, to do that. We can certainly, if we start noticing issues, reach out. I think I will motion to approve uh, with the condition of the six foot uh, brick wall. Um, I think with the smaller trucks, it is a manageable site. I think it makes sense for this area. Um, I think it's good to get this site, site redeveloped, um, and certainly, you know, kind of meets the, or fix, matches the overall use of this area.
Um, one uh, one note I, I would have is that the, um, is it the, who's the group behind them? The Moose? Yeah. Um, they, uh, we, they requested some sort of barrier between them and the, uh, the gas station. Um, currently they have a fence. Um, I think it's like split rail.
It is a split rail.
Um, and they've provided landscaping currently. Um, is that, are we okay with that, or would we need to extend, like in, first, I'm thinking again with Speedway. It wraps around the back and the side. Um, so I don't know if that's something you would like on this one.
What's that, what's that zone behind it? Is it the same zoning class?
Um.
Yeah.
Is it, okay.
I think it's, yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with the fence and the landscaping because it is up, they're abutting a parking lot. There's significant distance. There's significant distance from it. It's not going to be, in my opinion, disruptive to the existing use. And I would rather see a landscape barrier than.
Another six-foot fence.
Another wall.
Yeah, cause I, I actually spoke with the Moose after the last meeting. They came to me and, and, and made that known, I didn't know about it. So what, the trees that we're planting there are actually going to be evergreens, and they'll grow to about eight feet tall. And the idea is to butt them together so we kind of create a hedge, cause their concern was trash blowing through. And that'll help deter people from going through that, I would hope, so.
Yeah.
That was, that was their concern, was foot traffic and trash.
And that's a similar barrier to what the Moose has with the, a budding residential. So I think that that makes sense in that area. All right, is there?
Matt, can you go back to that, uh, aerial map again and, and show us the location of that?
Can I just do one point-of-order thing? Was there a second on my motion, so we can continue discussion?
I'll second.
All right, go ahead, Dan, sorry.
Uh, can you, uh, move that up to where we see the proximity of the, no, the other way? Uh, the intersection with the Glessner Street, I think it is. And so our approach is gonna be just about in that green area, just to the east of that car that's shown there. So you, you really have a very tight, uh, situation if, if people are not gonna abide by the rules and make a left-hand turn. It, it, that intersection, to me, looks to be very, uh, very hazardous. Not, you know, more so than what a car wash did when, when it was there.
Yeah.
Cause you'll have a lot more traffic.
Which is why our hope is nobody tries to make a left turn out of there.
But, but I guess that's, that's my point, is that, you know, I've spent ten years of my career doing exactly this, building and designing gas stations. This feels like we're trying to shove something too big onto too small a lot without the access it needs. I understand that people can do whatever they want in cars and trucks, and they can go over physical barriers. But a physical barrier presents a greater barrier than just striping. It's a lot easier to ignore striping. And given where Glessner's at and where the access is gonna be, without a physical barrier, you're encouraging people or not deterring people from making that left-hand turn. Now, I appreciate that it ma- makes it, a physical barrier makes it harder to get the truck to enter. Cause now the truck has to likely go over that physical barrier. But that's the whole point. This site's not big enough for what you're trying to put on. Doesn't have the access it needs to allow safe vehicle, um, the safe, you know, truck turns in the site and allow people to enter and exit safely. That, that's my concern.
Okay.
And I appreciate your willingness to say, well, we can do this, we can do that. I mean, it's hard to kind of just spitball up here and say, let's dramatically change, you know, the access here. I gotta go by what's proposed in front of me. And I don't think that's, that makes sense, this access makes sense for this site as proposed.
Okay, well, you're, I mean, you're allowed to put conditional uses on the approval, which is the concrete barrier. And, and we're absolutely amendable to it, so.
I, I, I have to agree, Carrie, that, uh, it is a, um, you're kind of stuffing it into a too small of a site, I think, to get good access and traffic flow.
Well, honestly, it's like, anything that goes in there is gonna have the same situation. There is no difference between this, a, a fast food restaurant, anything that goes in there is gonna have the same traffic issue. So what makes this any worse than any other use that would go in there? There isn't. This is a problem situation, it's a problem site, period.
Yeah.
So whether it's us today or it's somebody six months from now, it's gonna be the exact same argument.
The, the gasoline tank truck deliveries make it different. A fast food restaurant, why they would certainly have deliveries, right? They're not dumping off fuel twice a day, and they don't have a giant canopy up front that restricts additional movement. That's why I think gas station use is a little bit different.
But fast food restaurant also delivers a full-size semi-truck. That's a lot bigger than what we're talking about, twenty-eight feet versus sixty.
And, and I guess if you look at the site, excuse me, um, I'm assuming that you build your footprints to accommodate an RV wanting to get gas, which is gonna be larger than the delivery truck.
Mm-hmm.
As well, so, you know, I, I come, I hear the concerns, I agree. And I'm, if you guys wanna put the condition of the kind of barrier, I would just, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think, I kind of, you know, like I said at the beginning, I can kind of go both ways. Cause I see the, the benefit of it, um, and the challenges of it. But I also trust they're not building a site that they don't think is gonna be operational.
Yeah.
All right, so I don't hear any other discussion. However, one of our, uh, members had to resign from the board, cause she moved. So now we are at a tie situation, if we can't kind of have a, so I don't know, as chair, if I just get it, then if I'm like a tie-breaking vote, or I guess, I kind of am trying to figure out what we're gonna be at, so we can, um, it sounds like Mr. Klinger and Carrie are, are no votes. Most likely, well, let's just see the vote, and then I will adjust accordingly. We've never had the situation, so bear with us, friends. Um, so.
What, like, before you go, I mean, if, if there are, cause you have experience here, is there recommendations that you would make this?
If it had, if the traffic impact study recommends right-hand turns only, and given where Glessner is at, I would like to see something that would make right-hand turns more encouraged. Striping, to me, doesn't do it, cause it's very, very easy to, you know, right? It's the lowest barrier possible.
Absolutely, I agree.
To making a left-hand turn. Whether that's a mountable median, right, that you could then have the bigger truck drive over, whether that's a, a full median with full curb. Um, the challenge is, sitting here today, I think it's important to understand how the changes to the access are gonna change your ability to get the tanker truck in and deliver fuel to that spot. Right now, what you've shown, you know, is just how does it get into the site? Not how does it traverse around the site, given the fact that there could be cars at all the dispensers or all the up-front parking spots. So it's a little hard to just kind of, like I said, spitball up here and say, ah, it should be okay. I'd, I'd wanna see that prior to making a, a final vote, if that's what you wanna do.
Okay.
I can't control, obviously, what, what you guys do, if you guys are comfortable with it, you're certainly welcome to vote, kind of how you wanna vote.
I thought that's what we talked about the last time, too, was to see truck access on the site, not just in and out of the site. So that we could see how that's gonna flow in there.
I'd be, I'd be comfortable, too, if we wanted to put a condition that the truck turns are acceptable to the city engineer. You know, have them, have them review it and not have to come back to council or to planning commission. I'd be comfortable with that as well.
So.
Absolutely. There is another site in Finley that's being built right now that has a very, a larger volume of traffic in that area. And it has what Jeremy would call a pork chop, which is that raised curb that really defines what traffic flow will be in and out of that site. Um, they, the only difference would be, in my opinion, is they have a secondary access for fuel delivery. So that, that would create what you're wanting on there, but I don't know how it would work with the truck delivery. That would be my only hesitation, but there is, there are solutions.
I guess one last, you know, uh, thinking of it from an enforcement standpoint, three months from now, when we start seeing ninety or sixty-foot trucks pulling in, I'm kind of thinking, what recourse does the city have?
This is not conditional use, right?
It, it's a permitted use.
Permitted use.
The law director can comment if I am wrong on this, but I believe from a, a police, law enforcement standpoint, any obstructions to the roadway that are not standard traffic is a ticketable offense.
That would be true, and you're probably gonna also have a zoning violation if this is written up that way for those trucks.
So what I'm hearing is the desire to have a condition that states work with engineering to determine, to review the in-site traffic flow, as well as to approve a right-in-only, I'm.
Right out.
Right out only, thank you, we've, we've got, you keep confusing me, uh, the right-out-only, um, traffic barrier, physical barrier, okay.
And I, I think, again, subject to your guys' opinion, when we look at that internal traffic flow, we should be ensuring that the tanker can maneuver around the site without going over existing parking spots or potential parking, you know, vehicles that are at the dispensers. Right, so if there's cars there, the, the truck's not stopped trying to wait till they have to move.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Does that work for you guys?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Works for you guys?
Yeah, I just wish that Jeremy was here, um, you know, cause he could better speak to the, the access.
It's, it's very common for this situation to happen, and, and, and engineering would say, we'll work with you. So I have confidence that there's a solution.
Yeah.
We'll come to it.
And I'm just thinking about, like, every other gas station that we have in town. I have been to them where the large tanker trucks cause obstructions in their areas, and, and they are much larger than this. You're right, it's like, no matter the flow, depending on the driver of the truck, you could have a problem. So I think working with you guys, you obviously don't wanna have a truck blank, blocking your customers.
Absolutely.
Um, so I think we'll just have to kind of work through that. Okay, so there has been a motion and a second to approve the application for a site plan, SP dash zero four dash twenty twenty-five, with the conditions of a six-foot-high brick wall that meets the zoning requirements, to work with engineering on the internal site flow, and to have a right-out only with a physical barrier. Any other questions or comments, anyone that wanted to speak for or against? Hearing none, Jacob, whenever you are ready.
Mayor Maren.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbly.
Aye.
Mr. Klinger.
Nay.
All right, very good, thank you all. Team will be in touch to work through things. Moving to new item number one, application for zoning amendment ZA dash zero three dash twenty twenty-five, submitted by Keller Keller Seifert Enterprises LLC to establish initial zoning of CD condominium for parcel zero two zero 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 one zero three two three seven three upon annexation into the city of Finley. CPC staff comments.
All right, so this, uh, site is located in Allen Township, uh, but about the Finley corporate boundary to the east. The parcel is not located within a hundred-year floodplain, and the city Finley land use plan designates the area a single lot, large, a single-family, large lot. Parcel history, this site's currently vacant. Um, the lot went through, uh, plan review originally in twenty twenty-one, and the project was given approval by planning commission in June twenty twenty-four. Uh, the applicant submitted a site plan for a forty-seven-building, ninety-four-unit condo development. As part of their approvals, uh, they requested to annex into the city of Finley. Uh, staff was in agreement with them about the, uh, request for a CD condominium zoning, um, since it, um, as that was appropriate due to the pending approved, uh, plans. So, uh, staff recommendation, staff recommends, uh, approval of application for zoning amendment ZA dash zero three dash twenty twenty-five, submitted by Keller Keller Seifert Enterprise, uh, Enterprises LLC uh, to establish initial zoning of CD condominium for parcel zero two zero 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 one zero three two three seven three upon annexation into the city of Finley.
Very good, I see no comments from engineering or fire prevention. Sorry, Shanice, I took away your thunder. All right, so the recommendation from staff is staff recommends approval of the application for zoning amendment ZA dash zero three dash twenty twenty-five, submitted by Keller Keller Seifert Enterprises LLC to establish initial zoning, CD condominium for parcel zero two zero 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 one zero three two three seven three upon annexation into the city of Finley. Is the applicant here to speak on this item? Hi, Phil, can you just make sure that the microphone's on?
Yeah, uh, we gotta do a few, a few minor cleanup on this one, which is partially my fault. The, the parcel that Jacob talked about, obviously, is the big one outlined in red. That is gonna be the condominium. But also part of this annexation are the four parcels north of that, along ninety-nine. And those also need to be zoned. And after looking at this again, I think we probably need to come up with different zoning for those four parcels than CD, because otherwise, we're creating some non-conforming uses. I mean, the first three parcels from the east to the west are all single-family homes. So, I mean, those could be R1. The bigger issue is the last parcel on the west end, which is where Mr. Seifert currently has his plumbing business. So obviously, I, I mean, it's probably I1, but I don't know how everybody's gonna feel about putting an I1 parcel out there.
So I guess my question, just point of clarification, that is not on this application? So those would need to be addressed separately, or those are all one parcel?
They should all be addressed now because the whole parcel, all those parcels are being annexed. So they all need to be zoned upon annexation.
But not as part of this, at this point in time?
No, they, no, they do. They need to be, cause if you don't address the, the parcels along ninety-nine, they would come into the city as unzoned parcels.
Is this all one, it's not all one parcel now, but the annexation's covering all?
The annexation covers five parcels.
Gotcha.
Okay, and, uh, the big parcel, which is where the condos are gonna be, which is the one outlined in red, and then the four along ninety-nine are also being annexed. And if we don't do the zoning now, then they're unzoned parcels when they come into the city, and that causes problems.
You're talking just these right here?
Yep.
Now, uh, Matt, is this already?
That's the church.
Yeah, but is that already in the city, or the, and this is in city?
Yeah.
Okay.
Phil, I know there's often some buffer time, like, do we have time to hear this next month?
Uh...
I know, I, oftentimes with annexation, I know, I, I talk with Denise up in the mayor's office, and she's like, well, I can go this month, or I can go next month, you know?
Right.
There is some buffer time. I guess my concern is, is that, my concern is, is, you know, we did not, this was, this was not considered part of today.
Okay.
And we did not send out notices, and, and so.
Ah, well, it, it, it doesn't matter, because, I mean, the annexation process is completely guided by the city. If they don't do the second and third readings, it just sits there. So it's not like it has to happen right this moment, no.
So I think the, the, the proper, the proper method is, I think we make, we take action on the, the main parcel today. And then in August, uh, we will have the discussion of these.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that would be a problem, and just to make sure that all the proper notice periods occur, and I would prefer to save some postage and not have to re-notify on this parcel.
Okay, yeah.
So we could, we, I, I, I have no issues with the condominium zoning. Obviously, it's consistent with, with what was previously discussed. For historical context that are folks in the, um, audience, the city previously reviews items that are adjacent, that are connecting into our water system, and had reviewed, our main concern with the design of the condominiums was wanting to have more than one access point from safety services, and so we wanted to see an access point on ninety-nine, not just through the neighborhood. Um, the county wouldn't allow us to have that kind of condition on the site, um, since it was not yet into the city. So that is why the annexation process began. Um, so, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, um, that site plan will have to come back, given the length of time that has passed on that, or it's still within its window?
Uh, we, last month, planning commission did, voted on an extension.
Okay.
Of the permit, I know.
It seems like, okay.
Cause, cause none of the rules have changed, and it would just be simply repetitive. Uh, we've worked on this and reviewed it several times over the last two to three years, so.
I forgot that was this one.
You know, all the issues have been worked through, we feel like everything's in a really great spot. Uh, we just need to get the annexation finished, and then the project can move forward.
Very good. Okay, was there anyone else here that wanted to speak for or against the zoning? Hearing none, I will motion to approve application for zoning amendment ZA dash zero three dash twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, Jacob, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbly.
Aye.
Mr. Klinger.
Aye.
Mayor Maren.
Aye.
Very good. All right, moving to item number two, application for zoning amendment ZA dash zero four dash twenty twenty-five, submitted by Northtown Condomil, condominium Villas to establish initial zoning of CD condominium for parcel two seven zero 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 one zero one eight zero three one upon annexation to the city of Finley. CPC staff comments.
Okay, this request is located in that pocket of Liberty Township, uh, southwest of, uh, south and west of Northtown Drive on, uh, located on Villa Drive. Um, to the north and the east, it's owned R1, single-family residential in Liberty Township. Uh, to the west, it's owned O1, office institution. Um, parcel history, this parcel's been the Northtown Condo Association since, uh, two thousand. Uh, when staff, uh, reviews initial zoning requests, one of the key factors in our recommendation is the existing land use. Uh, this has been a condo association for twenty-five years, and given the size of the lot and existing, uh, structures, um, staff was, uh, agreed with the request for the condominium zoning. So we recommend approval of application of ZA, uh, zero four dash twenty twenty-five, submitted by Northtown Condominium Villas to establish initial zoning of CD condominium for parcel two seven zero 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 one zero one eight zero for parcel two seven zero 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 one zero one eight zero three one upon annexation into the city of Finley.
Very good. Engineering has no comment. Fire prevention?
No comment.
So the recommendation before the commission is staff recommends approval of application for zoning amendment ZA dash zero four dash twenty twenty five. Discussion, Phil?
Nothing on that one.
Just, just a quick question. So this area is still all in the township, correct? Yeah, okay. And so there's still a little bit of a pocket of township, but not just, it's just that area in red that we're in?
Yeah, there's, there's about
Or zoning.
two hundred homes in that doughnut. The city embarked on a process of requesting residents that were in the doughnuts if they wanted to be annexed. It was a mixed result, but Northtown condominiums did want to be within the city so that they could receive, you know, city fire, city police, all the city service.
Okay.
Yeah. Was there anyone else here that wanted to speak for or against this item? All right.
But Matt, you're saying that enough of them on the Northtown Drive, there was not enough, uh, people that wanted to come into the city on that section?
Correct. Other areas, it was a mixed result. We never got over fifty percent, which was kind of our, if, if an area had more than fifty percent of the residents, then we would look at it closer. Uh, Northtown, they've been very adamant or excited to move within the city. And as a condo association, they discussed it amongst themselves and the condo association did move to that, that he wanted to be uh, within the city of Finley.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve this as requested.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Jacob, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Tremblay.
Aye.
Mr. Klinger.
Aye.
Mayor Mearon.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Very good. Moving to item three, application for zoning amendment ZA dash zero five dash twenty twenty five submitted by Greenbrier Holdings LTD and Mora Rentals LLC to establish initial zoning of M two multifamily high density for twenty eight hundred South Main Street and parcel two seven zero 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 five one four three zero upon annexation to the city of Finley. CPC staff comments.
The request is, uh, located in Liberty Township on the west side of South Main Street, near the intersection of Township Road, uh, one forty five. Uh, these two parcels make up an area completely surrounded by the city of Finley. Uh, to the south, it's, uh, it's zone make, it's zone M two multifamily high density. To the east, it's owned, uh, M two multifamily high density. And, uh, we've got, uh, some vacant C two general commercial. Um, to the west and north, it's, uh, zoned a mix of R three small lot residential and R four duplex, triplex. Uh, parcel history, the northern parcel has been Greenbrier apartments since the, uh, early seventies. Um, the southern parcel is currently vacant. Again, when staffer reviews initial zoning requests, one of the main, um, key factors is, um, looking at the existing land use. Uh, these multifamily apartments have been existing for over fifty years and given the size of the lot and the existing structures, uh, staff agreed with the request for M two multifamily high density. Uh, so staff recommends approval of application for zoning amendment ZA, is that, uh, ZA dash zero five dash twenty twenty five submitted by Greenbrier Holdings LLC and, or limited and Mauer Rentals LLC to establish initial zoning of M two multifamily high density for twenty eight hundred South Main Street and parcel two seven uh, zero 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 five one four three zero upon annexation into the city of Finley.
There is no comment from engineering. Fire prevention?
No comment.
So the recommendation before the commission is staff recommends approval of application for zoning amendment ZA dash zero five dash twenty twenty five submitted by Greenbrier Holdings Limited and Mauer Rentals LLC to establish initial zone, zoning of M two multifamily high density for twenty eight hundred South Main Street and parcel two seven zero 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 five one four three oh upon annexation into the city of Finley. Discussion, Phil?
Not on this one either.
Sometimes less is more. These are not too exciting. Any discussion from the commission?
Just from a safety service perspective, this makes a lot of sense because you have the city EMS and police that are coming around this. But when a nine one one call comes in, Liberty Township, which is up on the northwest side of town, is responding through town to get to this. So this is a, this is a big deal. This is an advantage for that community.
Was there anyone here that wanted to speak for or against this item? All right. I will motion to approve application for zoning amendment ZA dash zero five dash twenty twenty five.
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, Jacob, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Klinger.
Aye.
Mayor Mearon.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Tremblay.
Aye.
All righty, moving to item four, application for zoning amendment ZA dash zero six dash twenty twenty five submitted by Hancock County Board of Develop, BD, alcohol, drug, ADD slash MH to rezone twenty four forty nine and twenty four fifty three Grace Boulevard from R three small lot residential to M two multifamily high density. CPC staff comments.
Uh, so this request is located at the intersection of Grace Boulevard and Ellis Avenue. Uh, these parcels are zoned R three small lot residential. To the north, uh, is a neighborhood that's zoned R two medium lot residential. To the south, it's the neighborhood of R three small lot residential and it's not located within the hundred year floodplain. Um, both twenty four forty nine and twenty four fifty three Grace Boulevard were constructed as duplexes back in nineteen eighty one. Uh, staff analysis, the applicant has indicated they would like to construct a kind of a deck area that connects the two duplexes. Uh, they cannot get their permits for a connecting deck if they remain two separate parcels. Uh, to combine the duplexes into a single lot, they needed to have it be zoned and multifamily M two zoning to allow that all on one parcel. So, uh, no additional expansion, um, of the buildings is planned, uh, aside from this, uh, connection, connecting deck area. So staff recommendation, uh, staff recommends that CPC recommend approval of application for zoning amendment ZA dash zero six dash twenty twenty five submitted by, uh, I'm gonna call it the Adamus Board, um, to, uh, rezone the twenty four forty nine and twenty four fifty three Grace Boulevard from R three small lot residential to M two multifamily high density.
There's no comment from engineering. Fire prevention?
No comment.
Thank you. So the recommendation before the commission is staff recommends that CPC recommend approval of application for zoning amendment ZA dash zero six dash twenty twenty five submitted, submitted by the Adamus Board to rezone twenty four forty nine and twenty four fifty three Grace Boulevard from R three small lot residential to M two multifamily high density. If the applicant could come forward to speak on this item?
Uh, while they're coming up, I'll just give a little background. This is something we've worked through. I think one of the things I want to mention is the use, the use of these buildings will not change. It's the current use as it is today. Um, the can, the, the desire is to kind of close off and not have any interior connections, but kind of have a common entrance and exit. With that said, issues with Wood County, um, you know, they can't, we can't have two, two buildings on one lot. And so zoning this as multifamily, which does allow for several buildings on one lot, is the workaround for them to accomplish, uh, the form of the buildings that they want. Um, again, this is not changing the use. It's been the same use for a long time. Uh, this is just a way to make it work, uh, with the building code and our zoning code.
Just real quick question, why, why the M two versus an M one at lower density?
Um, honestly, M one is, I don't think we have a parcel within the city of Finley that is zoned M one.
I didn't think so either, but.
M one and M two are identical. M one is just less dense. It's almost a force of habit that multifamily's M two and M one is this poor abandoned, uh, guy that never gets any attention. So.
So, so Matt, I appreciate that context. Um, I guess my only concern is if down the road they decided to tear down these structures and wanted to build something, what is our ability to ensure that something that is not coherent with the neighborhood going there? Would they would have to come, since it's residential, would they have to come back for any site plan review in that instance?
So if it's, if it's more than, so if they build a triplex, they would not have to come back. If they built something with four units, they would have to come, four or more units, they would have to come back. And there will be challenges. You know, if they scrape the site, then we have, you know, some fairly substantial setbacks, uh, density requirements, lot coverage requirements. So honestly, scraping this and having it as M two will be, there's no way, in my opinion, there's really no way to build like a five unit building without getting variances from the, the board of zoning appeals.
The setbacks would be twenty five feet from each street plus the rear of thirty feet. So I mean, that's pretty, pretty substantial.
And then, and then the lot coverage.
Yeah.
That was my assessment as well. I just wanted that to be communicated to the public that this isn't like step one of then being able to go in and build something that doesn't fit this lot.
Yeah. And M two, um, requires thirty five hundred square feet of property for every unit that you have. So many variances would be needed.
So then my next question is just to clarify, and you kind of touched on it at the beginning, because of Wood County and them trying to have a kind of single access point, that is why they aren't just going to get a variance for putting a deck between or an enclosure. Because it seems like that would be the simplest step is just to do a variance with zoning to do something, but it's because of Wood County that that can't occur.
Correct.
Okay.
They're, they're considering, it's now considered one building.
Okay.
And then we have two lots, so we need to, so we, we worked through this over a couple of months and this was definitely the, the simplest way to get to the final result.
All right. Now that we've talked around you for a couple of minutes, uh, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, Reed Ponks with Encompass on behalf of the owner. No, I mean, it's pretty much the way you guys have talked about it. The only reason we're trying to combine them is because Wood County is looking at it to, is one building on two parcels and they don't seem to like when you build across property lines. So that's the only, excuse me, that's the only reason why we're approaching it this way. We talked with them to try and work through leaving it the way it is and just building and connecting it, but they're pretty adamant that it needs to be one parcel. So we had to go this route.
Was there anyone here that wanted to speak for or against this item? Okay. I switched pages, so one second. Let me get back to the correct thing. I will motion to approve application for zoning amendment ZA dash zero six dash twenty twenty five submitted by the Hancock Adamus Board to rezone twenty four forty nine and twenty four fifty three Grace Boulevard from R three small lot residential to M two multifamily high density.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Jacob, whenever you're ready.
Mayor Mearon.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Tremblay.
Aye.
Mr. Klinger.
Aye.
And, uh, these, uh, all these zoning amendments actually will be going to planning and zoning at noon, which is in this room as well. And so just to remind everyone that.
And it's, it's also, they're all just recommendations. Uh, so we hear it today. Uh, planning and zoning will hear it at noon and then it will go to city council for three readings in which the final decision is then made.
Moving to item number five, application for alley slash street vacation AV dash zero two dash twenty twenty five filed by Romi Zarazua, Romana Rentals Limited to vacate the east-west right of way between the east end of Westgate Drive and parcel two three zero 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 one zero three two five four oh at the end of Spruce Drive. CPC staff comments.
So the request is located at the, uh, end of Westgate Drive and parcel number two three zero 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 one zero three two five four zero at the end of Spruce Drive. Uh, the west end of the right of way is abutting the corporate boundary between Finley and a pocket of Marion Township. Uh, it is roughly, it roughly measures sixty feet wide and a hundred and forty one feet long. Uh, it is located within the hundred year floodplain and, but it does not, it is not located within the hundred year floodplain, but it does appear to be providing detention to the area, um, that was developed along Tiffin Avenue there. Uh, staff analysis, the applicant requested the vacation in hopes to combine all the parcels that Romana Rentals, uh, Limited, owns in that area. Uh, they own the two lots on the north side, uh, that stub parcel off of the end of Spruce Drive and the lot, um, to the south of the, the right of way on Long Meadow Lane. The owner intends on building on the southern parcel once everything is combined. Uh, given the existing condition of the right of way, staff was comfortable with the request. So staff, uh, recommends CPC recommend approval of application for alley street vacation AV dash zero two dash twenty twenty five filed by Roman Zarz- Zarrazo, uh, Romana Rentals, uh, Limited to vacate the east-west right of way between the end of, uh, the east end of Westgate Drive and parcel two three zero 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 one zero three two five four zero at the end of Spruce Drive.
Engineering had no comment. Fire prevention?
No comment.
So the recommendation before the commission and staff recommends CPC recommend application for alley slash street vacation AV dash zero, zero two dash twenty twenty five filed by Roman Zarazua, Romana Rentals Limited to vacate the east-west right of way between the east end of Westgate Drive and parcel two three zero 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 one zero three two five four oh at the end of Spruce Drive. Discussion.
Yeah, real quick, uh, can you go back to that, Matt?
Yep.
Sorry. So this parcel and this parcel, and it looks like, is this one parcel here or is this two?
Two.
This is two up here. Okay. So is it, is the plan to combine all three of these? I'm assuming all three are the same owner.
Yes.
So is the plan to combine all three into one?
Yes.
Okay.
With the hope that he can use the southerly most part as an actual building lot. Now, how this ever got into private hands, I have no idea. But, uh, he, I mean, because it was an detention pond. Oh, sorry. Yeah, it is. I'm just froggy. Anyway. Um, but yeah, he's, he's looking to try to build something on that southernmost lot.
Okay.
If it can be re-engineered, but that's a question.
But, but this was all built as a detention area at one time. Was that for upfront here?
Yeah, that was all put in when they developed everything on Tiffin Avenue from, to the west, or to the east, excuse me, and they put in Spruce Drive.
Okay, because this is also a low area. So if he, if this gets.
Yeah, and he also owns that tail that sticks out at the end of Spruce Drive as well.
Right there?
That too, yep.
Um, I can concur with Phil. I mean, this is a detention area for a development and you don't normally see those get put into private hands.
Right.
It's, it's the first time in my twenty years that I've, I've seen this. So my concern in, in, again, we'll, we'll say the, the words, I wish Jeremy was here. Um, but.
It's gonna feel so loved and missed.
We'll put that in a minute.
So to me, the, the main question is to what extent is this the detention pond? Does the detention pond end here? If you drive past it, there's a lot of reeds, a lot of brush. You, you can't really see, you know, it's not a pond that it's delineated and you know exactly where things are. So I'm of the opinion that building a house here could work, but what can't happen is removal of any of the detention capacity. So as we sit here today, I don't feel like we have a good grasp of where the detention is.
Right.
It somewhat would surprise me that it stops like right here. I, I mean, it does feel like it goes down into this area.
My, my only, my only question was more of, hey, if we've got parcel here and a small sliver of a parcel here and then here, and we eliminate this alley, uh, then you are cutting this one off from access to the public, any public right of way. So if the intent is that all. So if the intent is that all three of these will be combined and then.
Yeah, I, actually, I already have a application ready to submit, but I can't submit it till the street's gone.
Yep.
And that's what we're doing, but he's gonna combine them all, and from that point, I don't know what happens.
That issue.
Yeah.
Drainage issue when that comes up.
Yeah, I mean. And, and there were some concerns that, I was talking with some residents and, you know, removing this right-of-way. Will not guarantee that he can build a house.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
This will be a process.
Yeah, that, that was gonna be my point is, when you're looking at, we're looking at the street and alley vacation.
That's it.
Does it make sense? Do we ever see this being developed and necessary for access? The answer is, in my opinion, no. So because they are owned by one, it makes sense to vacate it. Any, obviously, utility easements, anything like that are all still going to have to be appropriately maintained. In my opinion, this is a good step towards cleaning up this. Concern and being able to make sure that that, that is maintained appropriately for that entire area. Obviously, it would not be able to be developed if it impacted that. I do think that that, if in the future it works for the developer to be able to put something there, then. I think that that then actually holds more accountability for the maintenance of that drainage area because. There would be an adjacent property owner that. Would be impacted by it. Um, so I think the alley street vacation makes sense, and then any future things have to come back through the process.
But just to note, if. If, if a home were to be built here, it would not come back to city planning. But it would be internal review, the city engineer zoning.
Right.
Regional planning, kind of safeguarding this detention pond if they came in with an application.
How is the parcel currently zoned? Cause I was thinking that.
I think it's residential, but I don't remember.
It's, it's, yeah.
Yeah, so it, it's consistent with the neighborhood, it wouldn't be able to be condo, or condos or duplexes or higher density, it would have to be. Single-family residential. Okay, was there anyone else that wanted to speak for or against? If you can come forward and please introduce yourselves?
Good morning, my name's Dan Keer. Uh, I live just to the south of the retention pond there. You can see me back in my camper in there, actually. Lived there for seventeen years. Uh, you know, honestly, I don't have an issue with the closing of the alley. Uh, the issue would be future use, of course. What I've noticed in living there, that entire area is a retention pond. There's no division in that retention pond. We do get minor flooding because there's a ditch that runs from that retention pond. Behind my home there. And uh. The greater the rain, naturally, the higher the level. Uh, these past spring rains, we noticed it getting rather high. No real property damage, but erosion to our backyards, of course. Uh, there is uh. If we were to take away any of that retention pond, it would exasperate the flooding back there, absolutely. And that's what I just wanted to speak for is uh. That more discussion would be put into it. I spoke with Matt earlier. And I'm gonna request with him a meeting between the engineer, city engineer himself and our. The, the, the people that live in the area. But yes, I definitely would be against any building in that area. Uh, it's just gonna exasperate the flooding. Uh, we're, we're in pretty decent shape now, and I'd just like to see it stay there.
So, I, I appreciate you sharing that. One quick question I have is, have you seen any maintenance of that area over the last seventeen years?
Yes, I mow it all the time. I, I have taken over the maintenance. Uh, the neighbor also to the west there. Uh, of the retention pond, he's cleaned out a lot of the area. We've taken care of all tree cutting, trimmed it back. Mr. Zazara has done no maintenance to the area, and the residents have taken care of that. The entire seventeen years even prior to when he owned that, so.
So, a, all I do is bring that up from the perspective of one of the things that um, myself, Rob Martin, Jeremy Kalb have been talking about is. We have seen throughout town, different areas where detention ponds or whatnot have been developed, and. I'm gonna use Hunter's Creek as an example. Back in two thousand and seven, the reason Hunter's Creek primarily flooded was because there was actually a. Pipe collapsed because nobody maintained it. So we have been trying to develop a process to make sure different detention areas are maintained. I think this gives us a little bit of an opportunity to, if anything was going to occur there, to clean up and potentially modify that area to ensure. It is providing the detention that is necessary for that area, and hopefully helping alleviate some of the water that you, you.
Sure.
Have been receiving. So that's certainly a priority of ours is making sure that there's appropriate detention and maintenance of that.
Also, it would push flooding the other way out onto Tiffin Avenue. You know, if we can't. If, if, if that's, if that's made any smaller, I'm afraid we would just push water both ways, so.
Yep, calculation, yep, nope, certainly understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Did you have, wanna speak as well, sir? If you could just introduce yourself, please?
I'm Sean Scazey. I live in the house right across from Dan, not that one.
Sorry, yeah.
I own that whole corridor property, the house and the property. And my concern would be, like Dan mentioned, that retention pond, oh, it got into a private owner. When uh, I've, I've been there about twenty-nine years. And I've seen before the retention pond, all that stuff was put in, we had flooding in that whole corner lot, that road. It went up my driveway, it surrounded my house with water and three inches from my uh. Bottom plates on my house. So that does make a purpose, why we have it there. And Mr. Roman. I'm sure he's a nice guy. But the house he built, go to the, right on the edge of that screen, right there, he built that house. The lady next to her never had any problems with water. He built the house, she had all kinds of problems with water. I think she spent twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars to have her basement redone. And, which wasn't fair to her, because I think he built his house up higher. Is that gonna be the same issue when, if they build a house beside Dan? Is he gonna put the house up higher? And he's gonna have problems with water. So I, you know, that's my concern too, and I'm concerned across the street. I don't want a bunch of, I mean, if he, I mean, he has a lot of rentals there. I don't want a bunch of rentals around me. I mean, we've been there for a long time, and I know they can do whatever they want with it. But uh. That would be my concern. I don't, I'm, I don't mind him closing that off, but once he closes that off, he's gonna have access to whatever he wants to do, I assume, right? He can build a house there. Is that correct?
Well, again, you know, to me, the, the, the big determination if he can build a house is to what extent this property is detention.
That whole thing is a retention pond, right up to his, his lot.
Visually, I, I.
It goes down into the retention pond.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, and what the city is not going to let him do is reduce the capacity of this.
I mean, I don't want water problems, that's my bottom line, and, and other, none of the neighbors do either, want water problems. And if he builds a house, I'm telling you right now, just by his back experience. We're gonna have water problems.
When did he build that house approximately, just?
Three years ago, maybe, I think, three. And uh, so, I mean, I, I'd like to see Westgate going in from Wright Road. I'd like to see that, put a rail there and make it a cul-de-sac. We got a beautiful entryway on Fox Run, that boulevard. I don't see why we can't close that off and just make that a boulevard, but, I mean, a, a, you know, our own little area back there. But uh, that's my main concern is, I know what's gonna happen. I, I can see it already. He's gonna put a house there, he's gonna have water problems, you're gonna back up on Tiffin Avenue, and we're gonna have water problems. And then we're gonna have problems.
Yeah, well, again, kind of going back is because this is designated retention. Whatever aspect of that, he would have to meet the same requirements of the current flood code. To be able to detain and show the, the, that it is benefiting the neighborhood versus negatively impacting.
You're saying, once he close, once we close that, once you amend this, he can build a house there, right?
No, no, that's what I'm saying, is he cannot without showing that he is maintaining the same level of detention.
And we'd have the opportunity to come to you and.
It would be through the, the department.
Okay.
So, when a single house is built, um, they will submit a zoning permit. And they will show the footprint of the house, how it meets everything. But in this case. You know, like I said, this is, this is detention for public purpose. And so, the city will not issue him a zoning permit if he plans to fill in a detention base.
Okay. Alright, thank you, I appreciate it. Let, let me talk.
Okay. Have a great day. Matt, but, but this, this is all Marion Township below this line, right?
No, so.
Okay.
This is City of Findlay, and then this, this neighborhood is Marion Township.
Okay, alright.
The uh, corporate boundary here goes along this side and then kind of juts down, so I.
Unless they all wanted to annex. Yeah, there, that's another one of my little problem areas. Yeah. Though I know there are some properties along the Speedway and different things that are annexing, so hopefully that'll give us a little more ability to clean that up, so. Alright, anyone else that wanted to speak for or against this?
I guess I would concur that I think it makes sense if you got a dedicated right-of-way there that is never gonna be developed. To go ahead and take it out. Uh, and obviously, I think our safeguard then is that it is in the city's property. And uh, there will be control over that because of it being detention.
Alright, so I think we had the motion and the second.
We, we do not yet.
Did I not make that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I've done it too many times today, I'm getting.
I'll give you a break.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Alright, so we have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Jacob, whenever you're ready.
Alright, uh, Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Tremble.
Aye.
Mr. Klinger.
Aye.
Mayor Byrne.
Aye. Very good. Alright, moving to item six, application for conditional use C U dash fourteen dash twenty twenty-five filed by Focus Recovery and Wellness Community. To convert nineteen oh eight North Main Street into a new youth center. CPC staff comments.
Alright, the request is located on the east side of North Main Street, uh, between Rector Avenue and Lester Avenue. A parcel zoned R three small lot residential. It's an area zoned C, or R three. It's in an area that's uh, zoned R three small lot residential. Not, it is not located within the hundred-year floodplain, and the City of Findlay Land use plan designates the uh, property as small lot residential. Uh, parcel history, the site is the former um, Family Resource Center office building. Uh, applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a youth center. Um, when staffer viewed the request, it kind of likened it to a community center, which is a conditional use in the R three district. Uh, there will be no, no living quarters uh, as part of the facility. Uh, building has approximately uh, twenty-two hundred square feet on the first floor and twenty-two square feet in the basement. Uh, there is an attached, uh, a garage attached to the main structure via a breezeway. And most of the proposed updates have uh, been to uh. Renovate the uh, first floor, which would include a light commercial kitchen, an open meeting room and office. Arts and craft programming room, two youth lounges, a sensory control room. Uh, accessible restrooms as required by the code and a utility room. Uh, the applicant indicated that they would like, uh, also update the uh. Like to update the parking area for loading and ADA compliance. When I kind of reviewed this, I, I, I kind of likened it to a, a community center, um, and I kind of went into the uh, required parking spaces. Staff kind of discussed this, and we kind of agreed that really they're, they're meeting the uh, intent of the code by um, providing the twenty-two spaces that they have. And uh, we uh, we don't think that they necessarily need to go through the variance process to, to accomplish that, so. Just to kind of amend our, our recommendation, we just recommend approval of application for conditional use C U dash fourteen dash twenty twenty-five. Filed by uh, Focus Recovery Well and Wellness uh, Community to convert nineteen oh eight. North Main Street into a new youth center um, facility without any condition.
Engineering had no comment. Fire prevention?
No comment.
So the recommendation from staff is staff recommends approval for conditional use C U dash fourteen dash twenty twenty-five. Filed by Focus Recovery and Wellness Community to convert nineteen oh eight North Main Street into a new youth center with the following, no conditions. Uh, discussion. I believe the applicants are here. Guys can just come forward, share any additional information.
Uh, Brett Geese with RCM Architects. I do not have any additional information other than what Matt and Jeremy have already covered. Or Matt and Jacob, sorry. Um, just here to answer questions.
So there's no proposed changes to the building itself, interior, yes, but exterior, you're not adding anything?
Uh, the only two things that we're adding ex, on the exterior of the site is, excuse me. Uh, at the front door, we are updating a handicap accessible ramp to gain entrance. And then this first spot right here next to the building is going to be the uh. Handicap parking and loading zone.
Okay. And, so the only thing we're really approving here today is just the, the use.
Conditional.
The conditional use, yes.
Actual use, so, so mock me through, like, what, what is the use gonna be?
Um, a lot of it is day-to-day gathering space for geared towards those eighteen and under. Brooke, would you like that?
There we go. I, um, the building's gonna be used for youth who are ten to eight, or ten to seventeen years old. Um, it's for kids who experience um, any trauma, oppression, adversity. We run programs structured every day. It'll be maintained with um, staff within one to eight ratio.
Normal hours of operation, like Monday through Friday, weekends?
Yes, so Monday through Friday will be twelve to eight P M, and then on the weekends, we have to accommodate four hours per our. This is a capital project through the state funding to renovate and purchase this building.
What, what would be the occupant load if you got one to eight, uh, what kind of? The occupant load of the building?
I believe we were looking at plus or minus seventy-eight that was listed in the notes.
We currently have three staff, so we would not exceed twenty-four. That's just per our own policies.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Per our own policies with the eight to one, we have currently three staff who operate our youth center right now, so we're not exceeding twenty-four kids at one time.
The seventy-eight was just based on square footage.
Yeah, but that's probably not logical use, right?
Was there other folks here that wanted to speak for or against this item?
Uh, from my perspective, I think that this makes sense for this building. It's, you know, been for decades serving as a very similar use. Um, I'm glad to see the building being repurposed and giving a, a safe home for our youth. Um, who are needing these services, and I appreciate the work that you guys do. I know you've, you've done a great job in the community, and so I appreciate it. Um, obviously, it's not increasing the foot traffic significantly in this neighborhood. It's not. Uh, being renovated that would negatively impact the neighborhood. It is a conditional use, so if we start to have problems. The per, permit can be pulled if they are not addressed, just so you are aware. Uh, but from my perspective, this, this is an appropriate application.
I agree. Um, so I'll make the motion. Everyone else has today, so I figure it's my turn, so I'll make a motion to approve this conditional use.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Was there other discussion?
Are you gonna make improvements to the site too, and, and, I mean, the parking lot, is that gonna be upgraded or anything?
I believe the only thing that we would be looking to do uh, is a, a review of the asphalt in the parking lot, and if needed, reseal it. Uh, I don't believe it is of such a. Deteriorated state that it needs a full mill or uh. Uh, resurfacing.
Right, it has been deteriorating a bit since the building hasn't been in use, so it'll be nice to have something out there to where. You'll be taking care of it on a more regular basis.
Yeah, Brett, I think um, on the plans, I think you showed maybe some uh, cosmetic updates uh, kind of along the building where it's kind of roughest, but.
Okay.
Alright, I think we had a motion and a second. I don't hear any other discussion, so Jacob, whenever you're ready.
Uh, Mr. Tremble.
Aye.
Mr. Klinger.
Aye.
Mayor Byrne.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item seven, application for site plan review S P dash zero seven. Moving on to item seven, application for site plan review SP dash zero seven dash twenty twenty-five filed by Hope Barn Venue to review the renovation and expansion of fourteen thousand one twenty State Route five sixty-eight into a wedding, wetting, can't speak, wedding venue, CPC staff comments.
Alright, uh, the request is located on the north side of State Route uh, five sixty-eight, uh, east of the intersection with uh, uh, Broad Avenue. Bright, that should be Bright Avenue, um, so, uh, Bright Road. Uh, so the parcel is uh, zoned C two general commercial, um, the neighborhood to the uh, east is also uh, this, so that parcel next door is also C two. Um, the rest of the area surrounding it is located within Marion Township and it's zoned agricultural. Um, is located within a hundred-year floodplain and the Findlay, Findlay land use map designates the site as neighborhood commercial. Parcel history, uh, it's currently a residential home site. Uh, staff analysis, uh, the applicant has indicated that they would like to convert the house and barn into a wedding venue. Uh, they would be adding an additional uh, five thousand four hundred square foot building to accommodate the ceremonies. Uh, the building would be connecting, uh, connected to that existing barn on site and the new structure uh, meets the setbacks and standards for C two district. In the front of the new structure, they were proposing a parking pad to be located. Um, uh, I believe it, at the time, uh, it was a smaller area with just the, kind of the handicapped area in front. Um, they have provided this updated one, um, which I believe has uh, thirteen spots in that first phase. Um, this kind of grayed in area, um, on the south side of it has a additional nine um, proposed in, in that paved area. Um, this shaded area uh, is still showing as stone currently. Um, based off of uh, the initial um, drawings, we had recommended that um, the parking be paved as, um, if possible. Um, I think we were concerned that if uh, the parking was required to be paved, that it might mess up with the detention which they're providing, kind of in that back corner with the, the pond there. Um, moving forward on, on landscaping, um, they didn't necessarily meet the code, um, they provided uh, twenty-three foundation plantings instead of that thirty-six. Uh, and they didn't include any additional trees um, for the site, but given that the entire back area is wooded, uh, staff wasn't concerned about providing additional landscaping um, along that area, so. Uh, our recommendation was approval of the application for site plan review SP dash zero seven dash twenty-five, twenty twenty-five um, filed by Hope Barn Venue to review and the renovation expansion of fourteen thousand one hundred, one twenty uh, State Route five sixty-eight into a wedding venue with the following condition, um, paving the required parking area, maybe I could amend that to uh, say uh, receive approval from HRPC or city engineer uh, for the required parking.
So engineering did have a number of comments, um, so I'll read through them pretty quickly, nothing overly exciting. Regarding access, the site will be accessed by the existing drive coming off of State Route uh, five sixty-eight, so no concerns there. Water service, site will be utilizing the existing water service, site for sanitary service, site will be utilizing the existing sanitary service lateral. Uh, for stormwater management, the site will be installing a new wet retention pond on the northwest corner of the site, the pond will be sized to ensure there is not zero fill within the flood zone. Uh, MS four requirements, the site will disturb less than one acre, so the applicant will not need to comply with the city's erosion and sediment control ordinance. Um, their engineering recommends approval of the site plan, fire prevention?
I'm going to update my comments, um, we want to make sure they get permits for any construction slash remodeling that they're going to be doing on the site as well as get certificate of occupancies for all buildings that'll be used for operation.
Thank you. Alright, so the recommendation um, it, from staff, staff recommends approval of application for site plan review SP dash zero seven dash twenty twenty-five filed by Hope Barn Venue to review the renovation and expansion of fourteen thousand one twenty State Route five sixty-eight into a wedding venue uh, with the condition of working with engineering and HRPC to determine uh, parking, paving slash graveling restrictions, requirements. Alright, is the applicant here, if you could please come up and introduce yourself, just tell us a little bit uh, about your project, if you have anything else to add beyond what has already been shared.
Um, and, and just as they're coming up, I just want to note that I, I received a, a few letters, um, for the notification process, obviously we have the five hundred foot buffer which extended to the uh, neighborhood that's located on the north side of the river. Um, their concern uh, mostly is the amount of noise that potentially might be coming from a venue. Um, um, given that it is a fairly sizable distance, um, you know, this parcel extends all the way to the back here. So that five hundred foot buffer kind of catches them in the back, but the venue itself is up at the road. So, I don't know if you can discuss kind of the, the operation and, and give us some like idea on the hours of operation and um, size of the wedding um, wedding sizes that you might be hosting on site to give us an idea of what the noise might look like.
Okay, uh, my name is Matt Douglas, uh, be, my wife and I would be doing this, mainly her, but um, I love the building process, so. Um, basically the new building that you see on the, on the diagram there, that will, that will be the uh, that, we're, we're going to try to use this building here because the, the hoop barn itself is beautiful on the inside for the, for the actual venue. And then the plan is to move from there to like the reception hall in the back there. Um, so basically we're trying to keep everything confined into that location. Um, I'm going to assume that there'll probably be wedding photos taken out here by the pond when we get that done. Um, but uh, when you look at the, the, the outview, there shouldn't be nothing going beyond. Uh, we're going to try to like to keep everything kind of confined in between these two buildings here. Um, I mean, you talked about hours of operation, I'm not for sure like the other wedding venues, how much or how late they're open or whatnot, but I, I, I think of like a, so a couple wants to get married on New Year's Eve, that's going to be midnight, I, you know, I'm just, I'm thinking just outside, you know, I wouldn't get married on that day, but there's going to be somebody would want to, um, I'm just thinking, you know, I mean, I'm not sure, we haven't discussed hours of operation, anything like that, um, I'm definitely open to, open to that, I mean. Um, trying to think whatever, did you have any other questions?
Um, I have one, just one thought, uh. Through this process, just, I was curious, um, if we put a uh, like a conservation easement potentially, are, are you purchasing the whole property?
Yeah, I own the whole property.
You own the whole property, I was wondering, uh, some of the concerns from the neighborhood here, um, maybe a conservation easement um, that would just preserve the trees along the river?
I have no intention of taking it out.
Yeah.
That would, that would take away from the beauty of what I'm doing to the property.
Understand, um, I, I'm just thinking five years from now or something along those lines, it was just a thought to bring up for discussion.
Yeah, we, we have no intention of going using any of that, back to right now, if you go to the other map, um, when I talked to Jeremy.
Stop looking, Matt.
I'm sorry, I'm.
When I, when I talked to Jeremy Cow, apparently this is a retention pond that was put in years ago, um, when, whether they were doing with this property when it was all one parcel years ago, but this is like a retention pond that's there right now.
Yeah.
So everything kind of drains into that, into that retention pond, because I think there was uh, something, they were going to develop this area at one point in time.
They dug out this detention area and they spread the dirt here to try to raise the elevation.
Yes, yep. So. The, the.
Yeah, I had, I had a couple of questions, if you could go back to the site plan, not to make you dizzy, but. So is the, is the proposed pond here, this is going to be used for detention, but it's also, it's going to be a wet pond though, it's not going to be a dry basin?
Um, so I'm Kyle Van Horn, I'm with Van Horn Hoover Associates, um, so that's going to be a wet retention basin and the main reasoning for that is most of the site is in the hundred-year floodplain.
Sure.
So we'd be using um, dirt from that pond when it's excavated to fill up around the buildings, to get the buildings up and out of the flood. Um, all of those buildings, their finished floors are either at or above the flood, so, but their lowest adjacent grades are too low, so that would then bring it up for them.
And then as far as, that's helpful, and then as far as use, you still got, there's still the house there, what's the intended use of the house?
That, uh, just like um, uh, Scarlet Oaks on, it'll be part of the venue, I mean, it will totally be, so if, if they're renting the venue, the house will be part of that, so that way if they got out of town, but family coming in or whatnot, but, or changing if they were.
Yeah, they kind of get ready before the ceremony and all that stuff.
It will totally be part of the venue though, it won't be a, a rental or nothing like that.
Okay. And then what's the capacity that you're intending, like max capacity for guests?
So, and I'm not 100% sure on that, I don't know, the fire marshal, I'm going to assume he'll, the fire marshal will determine the, the, the number of occupants.
Building, building code will define the occupancy load.
Yes, that's, I, I'm not 100% sure on that.
Yeah.
Um, if, you know, if, if, when I kind of Googled it, like uh, if you uh, this building here was like uh, when I, just Google though, this isn't, I have no idea what, what it means, but this building could hold about two hundred and seventy-five. And then if they use this building for the, for the, for everything or the wedding or whatnot, that one could hold up to about five hundred.
And I guess my, my question then comes to, like, you've got, you know, parking certainly here up front, some back here. If you had five hundred people, I mean, it's not going to be five hundred cars, but, you know, how much space do you think is available to park here?
Uh, we, we talked with, yeah, we talked with Jeremy Cow about using the overflow parking.
The overflow parking being?
Yeah, it would be that area, yep, that area there, and then to the east of that.
To the east of, so in the, in the grass area?
Yeah.
Okay, I got you. Okay.
I guess, and one of the concerns I have was, we're building a, a, a facility here for several hundred people, but yet we're only actually uh, doing a parking lot and paving for, what was it, thirteen? Um, I mean, you're, you're, you're never going to only have thirteen people there, so. Um, I guess I would like to see more of that uh, that surface area uh, improved, not necessarily all the stone parking area. Uh, but it all needs to be uh, upgraded obviously, uh, so that it can be utilized. Uh, and that parking, as it goes around behind the barn, leaves kind of a remote access to the venue itself. So it's not, it's not real conducive as if you were to bring that parking to the east further.
So I, I guess from my perspective, I'm okay with the gravel and them kind of working with Jeremy to determine the layout. Um, you know, I've been down to events at Scarlet Oaks and, you know, the majority of time it is sitting with um, you know, maybe somebody going in and decorating or viewing the venue, but I don't want to have a bunch of gra, parking surface, impervious surface on a regular basis, I think it, even though the gravel at times, especially if you're wearing heels, gets a little tricky, my man's got to give me his arm, but um, I think that it makes sense, and so I guess I, I would leave it up to them to determine if, if in the future additional asphalt is necessary, but I would rather it maintain the impervious surface. Um.
I, I'd agree with that, I don't, I don't want to see additional stone all the way out here for the several times a year, you know, that you're going to use that. My, my concern was more of, hey, if you've got a hundred cars out here, whether they're parked in the grass or the stone, you, you're kind of leading them right to here where it's like a choke point between the cars coming out this way, cars coming out this way, would it make more sense to just connect that gravel right here where you get more orderly exiting of, of vehicles instead of just throwing them all at this big access point? I don't have a strong opinion on that, it was more of a question for you guys, does that, does that help with your site flow and layout?
Yeah.
The main intent with where that stone is, is kind of just where it existing, like the existing location of it, so that's kind of why we left that there. Um, are there any barn doors on the south side?
Hmm.
On the south side, yes, yes.
Yeah, we're talking like, right?
Yeah, uh, Lucius um, was going to put in glass doors here and on the end here. So on the south side, there'll be one, one big glass, glass door.
Yeah.
You can see where the, where the kind of the overhang is there.
Yeah, just talking about the flow as well as obviously if you have parking on that uh, east side, is just making sure you kind of have a designated cross area for your pedestrian traffic and.
And that's another reason why we added in the uh, turn lane striping, which is to try to delineate people where they should be turning in and out of the site. Um, and that existing access there is actually about seventy feet wide from five sixty-eight.
Hmm.
Um, and we're proposing to shrink that down to I think about fifty feet, so there's not, you know, as much air for people to turn and potentially drive through the stone or through the grass there to go back to the stone area.
And my other comment um, is really just aesthetics, I pretty much always tell people if you can add trees, add trees, so obviously maybe some small flowering trees right here where you still have visibility, but it creates more separation, especially if you're putting in a glass door. It's nice to be able to look across and, and see the, the field, but you're also going to look across the roadway. So maybe putting some additional trees would just be a nice amenity. Um. On the conservation barrier, you know, again, I hear you saying, you know, that's part of the appeal of the site, so I'm not really concerned about that. But obviously, long-term, I don't know if it makes sense, um. Cause what, the specific, so it's the site plan, um, I don't know, I guess what does the commission think about putting any sort of?
Is that typical, have we asked for that from other developers in the area? You're talking about chistic conservation easement or like around, around the river, basically?
Yeah, we, we did on uh, Cyford, Cyford Acres, we did ask for a conservation easement there. I mean, that's, that's an idea, I mean, maybe we, if there's, if there's folks in the, here to speak for or against it, maybe their discussion would frame our feelings on that.
Yeah, I think the conversa, conservation uh, district would be good long-term simply because ownerships will change and, and the whole use could even go to something else, if that's in place, then it would safeguard that uh, that area along the river.
Yeah, if you guys were willing, I think that would be beneficial, but.
And again, all that means is that we would set kind of a, a foot, a, you know, fifty-foot buffer along the river where significant tree removal could not occur, just really keeping the tree line, and I don't know the specific word in there. I think it's just mainly, you know, obviously if you need to clear certain trees because they're dead, that's one thing, but it's really just making sure that you don't go through and clear, clear cut it.
Yeah.
Um, I do know we have some folks from the neighborhood, did anyone want to come and speak for or against this item?
If you could, before you, I have one other question or comment, sorry, it, it's, it's about the other approach too. You know, this is going to be significantly greater use than, you know, the single-family house that was here before. I think this is an opportunity to reduce the, the curb cuts on five sixty-eight to just one.
Yeah, and, and currently there are no, it's all grown up in grass right through here. So there's, you know, I know we're going to extend that parking down to there and then loop it around, so I don't, I don't foresee that being, that wouldn't be an issue, I don't believe, we, we even, Van Horn, we talked about that too.
And I think we'll also have some proposed signage on that right entrance there to the east, that's going to be the main entrance, you know, in and out regardless, so. You know, and, and there's a lot, if you go to the street view real quick, um, there's a lot of, you know, old foundation and concrete kind of between that house and that existing barn. So adding the additional parking in there, it's just going to clean a lot of that up. Um, but I think the owner was hopeful to keep that other entrance if possible, now with the intent that it will be used very often. More so for just access to the house if someone wants to pull up there real quick, unload, you know, the dress out of the car, something like that. Um, but that other entrance is by far going to be the main entrance and exit from the site.
I, I'm just thinking, you're ten o'clock at night, there's three hundred people there, people are going to try to get out any way they can, you know, it's having one point for them to enter and exit is going to be a lot better for people traveling on five sixty-eight rather than two entrances where you got people maybe making lefts and rights right next to each other, that makes sense to me and is an opportunity to do this, and then I don't think it's going to affect your use of, you know, this driveway area or the ability to people to kind of drive up and access the house, it's just removing that little bit of, of driveway. Again, that would be my recommendation, but open to whatever the other commission members feel is appropriate. Again, that would be my recommendation, but open to whatever the other commission members feel is appropriate.
I like the idea of that too.
We can have, there was other folks that wanted to speak for or against the, this item. If you can just come forward and introduce yourself, please.
Uh, one other note that I, I forgot to mention earlier. Um, so I was talking with, um, Law Director, um, Rob Feidner earlier this week about the, the use aspect of this. Um, it's, there's not really a good definition for wedding venues or like social hall. Um, and, uh, there wasn't necessarily, like, it's not like a, a bar or nightclub. Um, but I think that this kind of falls into a conditional use for the C-two district. So I, I think, um, there should probably be two motions at the end to, one, approve a conditional use for the site. Um, and two, for the, the site plan. Um, and, and the reason I, I say that, just, you know, with the neighbors, you know, with the, you know, hours of operation and, um, and things about the use of the site, you know, that kind of falls under the conditional use aspect of it, rather than, you know, looking at the, the physical layout of the, the site plan. So just wanted to kind of clarify that, um, that wasn't included in the packet and, um, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, we had talked about that and thought it was appropriate.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Mike and Karen Johnson, um, and we come in peace, just so you know. Um, but yeah, just some concerns and some questions. We, um, live basically right behind that property. Um, and our biggest concerns are gonna be about wildlife and conservation and the noise aspect. Some of that, the parking issues are some things that we've discussed too. Uh, also, future use of that property is very concerning to us. Um, you know, blessings if this goes through, that you would be successful for many years to come, but we don't really know what we're opening ourselves up to here either. So as per noise, um, most people in our neighborhood, and many of you may not be aware of it, I know Mayor Murn is, uh, very aware of our neighborhood, but we have beautiful property that, uh, goes clear out to the river. We're very, very blessed to, uh, enjoy the space that we have. Um, the biggest part of that enjoyment and many of us along that lineup property is that this is our retirement homes. Uh, got a big group of retirees back there, and we love the wildlife, we love the serenity. Many of us are bird watchers. We spend many a night sitting in our backyard counting the birds. Uh, I have a few deer buddies back there who actually come up and wait for me to, to give them a couple little treats at night. It's a beautiful property with, uh, fox and I don't like the coyotes when they show up, but they're there and, uh, um, I mean, we just go on with the amazing wildlife that comes through that area. My big concern too is that, um, thank goodness Hancock County, um, Parks has taken on a property there as a conservation area. This used to be the Vogel Song Farm for many, many years. I grew up around there. And, um, that is also noted on their sign out front for the Vogel Song Conservation, that this is a hawk nesting area. And I can attest to the fact that we have lots of hawks. Unfortunate for all the little bunnies who don't get to populate real well in our area. Um, so my concern too, and even one of our neighbors now has a hawk nest right in their backyard. So, and I'm sure that's coming from that beautiful nature in that area. So noise is a grave concern for me. Um, you know, partially yes, for my own enjoyment of my private property, but, uh, for the future of our wildlife in that area. Um, we, we just have to, I think, do our due diligence to respect, especially in an area that has been set apart as conservation. I would love it if you would have more comfort, uh, conversations with the landowner, with the potential of protecting that land back there and the trees, vital concern of the trees. It's a beautiful ride back there. If you've never hopped on a kayak and traveled through that back area, we love to see the kayakers, so we're not, we're not trying to shut everybody out of that beautiful land. In fact, we embrace it. We, 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 we love to be out on our property and say hello to people. Um, and love to see the river being brought back to life back there. Uh, many people in Finley just are shocked that, what, people go out on that river? And it's actually very beautiful when you go down, uh, toward five sixty-eight bridge. It's, it's a lovely area, not so muddy, but, um, so that's super, super high priority for us. The noise part of it is, is again, something that we've discussed a lot. Uh, very concerning, not only for, um, could that usage go up to, we don't know. And I, and, and we're hearing today, we don't really know. We're not really hearing these concrete plans of, how many parking spaces are we talking? How much is gonna be blacktop? How much is gonna be stone? Where is that floodwater gonna go? We flood several times of year, of, of the year. So our property is beautiful and then it's, it's full of water, you know, uh, this high. I can have geese out at the river way beyond, and I can have geese right up at my fence, so, uh, you just never know. And so I, we have concerns over what does that mean with that retention pond? What does that mean? I would urge you to be very, um, and I'm sure you're engineers, I don't know any of this stuff, I'm sure you're all aware of this, but not pu- not pursuing everything be paved, if we would see somehow this would grow, uh, can we be, be sure to preserve some absorption of that land to then not flood us? There's times when we can't get rid of water in our backyard for weeks, depending on what happens. So, um, I would hate to see that extended for us to have to deal with. Um, and then, um, yeah, so the noise, the flood, the, the wildlife, the conservation there, even the noise of, um, of venue is gonna disrupt that, that wildlife too. So protecting the, the, um, all of us landowners there, right? Anything to add?
Not to add, um, I just, I just want to hear any comments on that first, I guess, what she said.
Um, and, and to your point about the parking, that's one of the reasons we're not pursuing a one hundred percent paved area is for aesthetics, um, drainage. Um, so they do have to account for, they'll be adding impervious surface with the new building and the parking. And that drainage is accounted for, how is it going to the detention pond? Which will be about in this area here? Okay. Um, and then the other point is, uh, the property is zoned C-two. Um, which allows for Walmarts and Targets and, and everything.
Can I ask why that is zoned that way? Or can that be changed to something ever again? Changed back to something less?
Well, so that's what we just discussed, is it being, um, having a conditional use permit. C-two really is the broadest, but really the only applicable, um, setting for this. If they wanted to change it to something different, I don't know what would be appropriate for an event venue outside of C-two. On the, you know, we were discussing the conservation aspect, the other thing with the sound. Um, they, they, there are sound restrictions in the city of Finley, the distance to the property line. You are not able to, you are not supposed to be able to hear noise off of your property. Um, so especially given that it's much closer, obviously we can work them and, and call them in, and if appropriate, they get ticketed. Um, I'm not overly concerned with it because of the distance as well as the number of trees that are there. That creates a pretty good sound buffer. Um, guys are probably more likely to hear music from my patio than them.
I hear, I hear, um, even the guy on the corner of, um, Bright Road and five sixty-eight has, I know he has, uh, I, I hear his rooster all the time. And my neighbor, three houses down toward Bright Road plays music. I, I like the music he plays, so I'm okay with it, but, um, I hear his music. It's so, and some, it depends too. It depends on cloud cover, it depends on the wind. But there's times it sounds like his music's literally coming out of a speaker in our yard, and there's times when we don't hear. So there, there's sound, last night we were sitting out and we heard people talking really loud, and we're like, where, where's that coming from? And I mean, it took, it took several minutes and it was kayakers.
Yeah, we hear the kayakers.
The carrying, because I even think the trees matter in that they, they carry sound in different ways. That I think was our concern.
And it's not like they were guests hearing any music coming from the place, but I, I am concerned, I mean, there's not gonna be any outdoor bands.
Good music though, like really good music.
Are there?
Oh yeah, the outdoor bands, yeah.
The intent is to keep everything in the building, so, so the two buildings, so the big buildings will be public, the, the weddings are, and then that, that new building will be.
If you guys can come forward, just because we are recording, so since you're on the record, we need to have you on the record.
So, so the, so the two buildings, so the main building.
Could you, could you, I don't, we can hear you. When we go to do the minutes and people watching on YouTube, they can't hear a word you say until it's in the microphone.
So, so the main building, the, the old Gothic barn would be the venue, would be the actual wedding venue. And then the building behind that will be the reception hall. That, that is, you know, that is, that is the intent of the whole, of the whole thing, is to keep everything inside the buildings. I mean, ru- like right now, we're gonna heat and cool the building, so, so I don't know why you'd want to be outside today, but, you know.
I guess, I guess my concern be like, you, you're, you're gonna put that pond out there and someone will visit the site and say, oh, it's beautiful out there, let's have the wedding out there and the band and put up tents and, and, yeah. Can, can you do that, or is, is he allowed to do that, or?
Yeah, he would be allowed to do it. Um, I would say it's probably pretty swampy back there, kind of going back to our point. Uh, um, so it probably wouldn't be ideal for, for use, but they could technically do that.
I think there'd be a difference too between saying, hey, let's have the wedding out there and let's have a loud reception out there. I mean, certainly everybody's entitled to, you know, quiet enjoyment of their own property, but where it impacts the other neighbors, that, then it becomes a potential issue. Um, I do appreciate your comments too about the river and the kayakers and canoeers and how beautiful it is. My seven-year-old and I paddle up there at least a couple times a year. I do most of the paddling, he just kind of sits and rides. Um, so if, I, I think protecting that is important. And if the landowners were agreeing to it, I think that conservation easement along the river makes a lot of sense.
Additionally, I would mention, by doing it as a conditional use, if we start to have significant issues with the property, nuisance, repeated calls for disruptions to the neighborhood, your conditional use can be revoked. Uh, you wouldn't be able to operate in that structure. Yes, Mr. Law Director.
I would add it to the noise issue. I would highly recommend that any music DJ or live be inside, and it sounds like it's gonna be. If it is, we, uh, years ago, I've been around twenty-six years in prosecutor business. Um, a few bars in town were starting to have live outdoor music and it would, it would disturb neighbors and law enforcement did enforce it, and then it ruined everybody's night. The band had to leave, or the owner got ticketed, or the manager got ticketed, and it was a mess. And eventually they just quit having outdoor music like that. Now, some places still have a porch guitar guy or something like that, but as far as loud bands, if they're inside, as they mostly are now, you can't be too loud or the people inside can't bear the music. So it'd be highly recommended to keep music, DJ or live, uh, inside.
Was there anyone else here that wanted to speak for or against this item? If you can come forward and introduce yourself, please.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Nick Scheck, and we own the twelve acres that's right to the east of the property we're talking about. You can see it there in front of the, uh, that is Vogel Song property, as was stated before. We actually live in the Vogel Song House, which isn't, uh, right there on the property, but it's across the road and down a little bit. Um, we love Hancock County, we love Finley, we think it's a wonderful place. Uh, we moved from Wyandotte County off our family farm because our three kids moved here. I am all for development in Finley, Ohio. It's what's made Finley, Ohio great. But what I'm seeing here is, is a premature plan, and you folks see plans all the time. But you see more, you see more plans for parking. What, what, what concerns me is, is if, let's go to the, they called it, or someone called it a retention pond that's just to the west of our farm.
No.
No, just to the, just to, right there. Folks, that is not a retention pond. That was dug out, that's a swamp is what that is. That was dug out and put in front for the past owners, and you're shaking your head yes.
Yeah, it's, it's not an engineered detention pond.
And that was, that's what was brought up today, is it was like it was an engineered detention pond. It is not. It is a swamp, and I hope you folks look at that very closely. The, the dirt to the front would be impossible to put parking there unless it was excavated. Maybe back into the swamp where it came from. It was, the people who owned it before were going to sell that dirt. That's why that dirt was pulled out of there. Um, and it was, it went under, they, they did not do it. Parking is huge, drainage is huge. I know they have a retention plan, but I haven't heard anything here that's concrete enough for a vote today. I, I really, really haven't. It's, it concerns me. It, it concerns me because it's kind of up in the air. Well, you know, we've got thirteen, I agree with Mr. Klinger. We have thirteen spaces here, we have a few spaces here. Uh, that's where I'm at. I'm not against the venue. It's not a, it's not a plan. It's a, it's a thought.
So I guess, sir, have you seen the plans we were given?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, it, I would say is pretty consistent with what, uh, we typically require. Um, it does show the required parking that needs to be asphalt. Um, we do want additional, uh, plans for the gravel parking. Um, but we also understand that you really don't want to engineer a site to maximum capacity from the standpoint of you then have a much less attractive spot. Um, so like, if, have you ever been down to Scarlet Oaks?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, and so they have, where they just have strings laid out for parking. I would recommend doing similar so that you kind of have, same, same with the fairgrounds, right? They have overflow designated. Um, we do have, which was provided to the engineer, the specific stormwater, um, piping plan that then does get that to the detention pond. So they do have an engineered detention pond that has to meet the requirements for this site per the, the city of Finley flood code. So it has to be engineered to have at least a, a hundred-year storm plus then an overflow outlet. Um, so I, I, I would disagree a little bit that they haven't provided what we really need to determine that it's an appropriate site plan. Um, we don't always look at all of the specific, specific engineering in this meeting because our engineer reviews and then provides comments. So as I kind of shared at the beginning, he said, yep, it meets the different requirements.
The other thing, Mayor, we haven't talked about is, is something I, I've read in the paper that you love is the Greenway Trail. It's a wonderful facility out there, absolutely wonderful. We haven't, the, the egress and coming in and out of, of this property doesn't mention the Greenway Trail at all and how that will affect, uh, people using the Greenway Trail. Uh, cause let's face, they use that twenty-four, that trail is used twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It's beautiful. But, so people using bikes, people with kids, people coming out that have had a few too many. I would just like for you, for you guys to consider the trail too. It's, it's huge.
Yeah, that's a great point, and I actually did have a note here to mention having signage on their private property about, you know, a, a stop sign and a watch for pi- bicycle and pedestrian traffic. Um, I think that that will be wise. I would also recommend, um, on their site, having some lighting. Uh, you know, just low lighting to emphasize the entrance and exits, which I'm sure you're going to want for people coming for a venue if it's in the evening hours, especially in the winter. Um, so I, I concur that we need to make sure that it is a safe environment for folks. Um, obviously people also are responsible for looking, oh, there's, there's a crossing. I need to also be vigilant as well.
One last thing, water takes the path of least resistance. We all know that. We live in Finley, Ohio. When they start moving, excavating, that twelve acres there, if it's, I hope in their plan that they know that that's, their water is not gonna run across to our twelve acres in any way, shape or form, because again, that could, it could adversely affect the crop. Uh, and I want to make sure that that's, that's something too, because I really don't, until you, until you see it, until you have the experts look at it, you really don't know where that path of least resistance is. So I hope that this committee looks at that as far as our twelve acres is concerned.
Yep, and I believe that that is why the proposed detention pond is in that northwest corner, that it must be based off of the engineering. I am not an engineer, however, I have learned over the years, those detention ponds are put in the area to which the direction of flow is occurring based off of the top, topography of the property.
Thank you. Can we, can we agree that, that the pond that was what I call a swamp is, can we agree as a, as a, that's not a detention pond?
No, it is not an engine detention.
Because it was brought up that it was, it is not.
Nothing, nothing about that, the, the existence or non-existence of that swampy pit.
That's what it is.
I know, I know. That swampy pit has no effect on this plan. So when it rains and the water comes off of this parking lot, it will drain to that pond. And then it will be metered out to the river. So any, any water here is designed to go there. And that's, that's the drainage calculations that the city engineer has, cubic feet per second, all that nerdy stuff. Um, so, but yeah, that, the swampy pit in the back has no effect on this project, and we're not relying on it in any way, because it is. Cause it is a swampy pit. It's not engineered. It's poorly done. We understand that.
Thank you.
I, I watched it being built and I kind of shook my head.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
So, um, and please excuse my ignorance on this, but when you're talking about then, then you said the overflow will go to that pond and then it's going to go out to the river. How different is that than to how it is today? Is that adding drainage out to the river? Is that taking that? I see, I know you're saying it stays in that flow, but right now if we have a heavy, heavy rain and that property, you know, is, is pushing water in a direction that it's going, where, is it going right to the river or elsewhere?
Detention, so in general, the rules say when you develop a property, you can't add it to the water. You can't add it to the river faster than it was as a natural field.
Okay, okay, perfect.
What the, the purpose of a detention pond is, the water goes quickly to a detention pond and it leaves the detention pond slowly.
Slowly, okay, okay.
So it rushes to the pond and then it's engineered to not just, you know, if everyone just rushed their water to the river, it'd be a nightmare. But generally, and, and I'm sitting here explaining it when, when Kyle could explain it much better.
So just, yeah, kind of add to that, that any impervious surface, any added stuff, we have to account for in that detention. Um, and currently majority of that site flows north anyway, so it's not like we're changing the direction that it currently flows when it rains. It's not like it goes south to 568 and we're putting catch bases, so it goes north. So majority of that goes north. Um, and all that impervious surface is accounted for in that retention pond. Um, and it'll meter it with the city regulations.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I, a couple of questions here. I guess that kind of goes, uh, what we've been talking about. You know, I would want to certainly see that pond of a size that as we pave more area, it's, it's going to accommodate that too, because I, I would think at some point there is going to be more pavement than 13 cars. Um, I would like to see that house driveway cut off primarily because of the, uh, Greenway Trail there so that, uh, we don't have one more point of cars going in and out. Um, and just as, for the record here, just looking at the, the square footage of the buildings, the, the barn facility, if you use that for a sit-down type, uh, area, that, uh, is figured by the Wood County or building code as about seven square feet per person. So that could accommodate about 400 to 450 people, depending on whether there's restrooms in there or other, other facilities. The, the, the new hall they're putting in could accommodate about 350 people in a sit-down type si- situation of, of, of dinner or eating. So I just wanted that to point it out too, that that's kind of the volume we're looking at.
Well, and so I'll be, who can afford a 700-person wedding these days? But I'm, that's just a joke on the side.
Not together. They move from one to the other.
You know, when we look at parking, you know, over in my 25 years, the, kind of the theory on parking has somewhat changed. When I was in school at the University of Cincinnati, there is a, uh, movie theater and it has almost 1,200 parking spots. One spot for every seat within the movie theater. It is the most insane thing you've ever seen. When I look at parking, um, I don't want their traffic to cause public issues. Their lack of parking will cause them issues. It will not cause the city issues per se. There's not a neighborhood that they can park, they're going to be parking all along the street. So really, uh, the amount of parking that they provide will kind of dictate how they run their business uh, without causing issues to the public. Again, what I don't want to see is us say, you know, gravel everything, have this huge gravel area. It takes away aesthetically. It's used once every four years. It's a maintenance issue. So in a lot of ways, I'm comfortable with the level of parking that they're comfortable with. But they will work with engineering and kind of come up with a refined plan for this area. Um, and we're going to sit down with Kyle and Dan Stone and say, okay, how many cars can, you know, show us how many cars can fit there? What about this size? So we're going to sit down and have another conversation about this. But our goal is not to require them to, to gravel all the way up to the swampy pit and the whole field. Um, you know, we want to keep as much natural as we can and this is in the flood, flood plain and we don't want to add more impervious surface than we need.
Yeah, if I may, um, to add what you mentioned about the pond, um, that pond currently is slightly oversized just because we needed fill, to fill around those existing buildings. Um, but with us obviously looking at the revised parking, we'll ensure that that pond meets current code and all that impervious surface is accounted for.
All right.
So I would, yeah, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion unless there's more discussion.
I also have a motion ready.
I just.
I'm at it, yeah.
Okay, so I would motion to approve application for site plan review SP dash 07 dash 2025 filed by Hope Barn Venue with the following conditions. Work with engineering and regional planning on parking plan. To this, well, I'm going to do it as a separate, but the conditional use will make a separate motion on that. Ensure compliance with the city's sound ordinance and work with regional planning on a conservation easement.
What about the signage?
Eliminate the west curb cut. Was, that was a discussion point that we kept coming back to.
Yeah, I think we should include that because I think it makes more sense to keep the flow within, uh, the site. So remove the western entrance and then what was the final one you guys?
You mentioned signage and lighting on the, um.
And then work with regional planning on signing and lighting at the entrance re- related specifically to the Greenway Trail. Any, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any concerns with those items?
So I, I guess I don't understand the conservation easement.
If you can come forward. Yep, so what, what we're talking about, and that's why I want you really to work with regional planning is maintain, what is reasonable on maintaining of the, sorry, my phone's gone wild. The maintenance of the tree line and that buffer. So again, when we talked about not being able to just go in and clear cut.
Right.
But I don't know the specific width of that area right now and if it's appropriate for us to say it needs to be maintained at its existing. Well, what if you want to go in and put a little gazebo? If somebody wants to have two people and go do a, you know, a service in the middle of it. So I don't want to be super specific. I want you to work with regional planning and determine what's appropriate to maintain the overall aesthetics, create that natural buffer for wildlife protection and the neighborhood protection. Um, but I want you guys to be able to kind of talk through that.
Okay.
Okay?
In general, what I'm thinking is some sort of easement that is, is 20 to 30 feet or so, like from river edge to here and it would go along here. And the purpose is just to protect these mature trees and keep them there in perpetuity.
Yeah, that, I'm, yeah, I don't think that would be, I have no intention to do that, but like you guys have mentioned if, you know, if it was sold, I couldn't tell what the next owner would do, yeah.
Yeah.
But I have no intention of doing anything like that. And as far as your Greenway Trail, people park out there all the time and walk down that trail, so I am totally for that. So people are going to park there and walk during the week when we're not doing weddings. So I'm, I'm totally fine with that. I'm not going to be, you know, fireworks, everybody's out there parked out there, you know, so.
Yeah, so we just want to make sure that people are aware that there may be pedestrian and bicycles crossing and that, that we don't have conflict points. All right, so we have a motion.
Just real quick, just a thought. The conservation easement, does that make sense to tie that to the conditional use rather than the site plan approval? I don't know if it matters.
The law director stepped out.
Functionally, yeah, you're laughing, yeah, so I.
I, I don't think it really is going to matter. I almost say site plan because if somebody else comes in, the conditional use can transfer with the property, correct? Or it stays with the owner?
If it's a permanent easement, it's not going to affect the future use.
Whether it's attached to the site plan or conditional use, the easement is a separate document.
Right.
Executed, it will stay there.
I was more thinking about planning commission and our ability to attach unique conditions to site plan approvals. That feels like a unique condition that would be more appropriate for a, a conditional use. But if it's functionally the same thing.
Both.
I, I'm good. I just wanted to bring that up and see if that was a problem.
I agree. It, it's probably better suited under the conditional use.
Okay.
Like hour, if we did hours of operation or no outside bans, anything like that, that would be attached to the conditional use.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, so we want to modify the motion then and put the conservation easement on the conditional use? Okay, I will amend my motion. Do you amend your second?
Second.
Very good.
Amend the second.
Amend the second. All right, any other discussion? We're all sounding good. Okay, Jacob, when you're ready then.
Mr. Klinger.
Hi.
Mayor Maren.
Hi.
Mr. Martin.
Hi.
Mr. Tremble.
Hi.
Very good. With that, I will also motion to approve a conditional use for an event venue at 14120 State Route 568 with the condition of an, a, uh, conservation easement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Jacob, whenever you're ready.
All right, uh, Mayor Maren.
Hi.
Mr. Martin.
Hi.
Mr. Tremble.
Hi.
Mr. Klinger.
Hi.
Very good.
Awesome.
Thank you, gentlemen.
This is a great use for the property. I appreciate your guys' willingness to, to work with us on this, so.
Yeah.
That barn, I, I suspected it would be a, a nice spot.
I don't plan on getting married again, but.
That's why. I was laughing when you said that, you know, I want to get married on New Year's Day and I was like, well, you're already married, so that's good. And I'm sure your wife appreciates that. All right, seeing no other items on our agenda, this meeting of the City Planning Commission is adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good day.